Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, January 29, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, Logan Scholl-Walter. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. Finance and Law Committee, Mr. Lavelle is the Chair. We have new papers. We have Bill Number 49. Resolution Providing Foreign Agreement for Payment of the City's Share of the 2020 Operating Expenses to the Allegheny County Central Tax Collection District for Tax Collection Cost Not to Exceed $8,930.81. Bill Number 57. Ordinance Amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title II Fiscal Article V Special Funds Chapter 237. The City of Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund. To Conform with the Home Rule Charter Article IX In Order to Establish the Creation of the Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund. And this piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilmember Anthony Coghill and Deb Gross. Bill Number 58. Resolution Authorizing the Creation of a Parks Task Force. This piece of legislation is sponsored by Council President Teresa Kell Smith. Public Safety Services Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the Chair. We have new papers. We have Bill Number 50. Resolution Amending Resolution Number 849 of 2019 Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an amended professional services agreement with Intime Solutions, Inc. for EMS and police scheduling and timekeeping services at a cost not to exceed $863,525. Bill Number 51. Resolution Amending Resolution 50 of 2018 Entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement with Cover Your Assets LLC for a web-based secondary employment scheduling system by extending the term of the agreement in order for the pending RFP process to be completed. Bill Number 52. Resolution Authorizing the Citizens Police Review Board to Enter into an agreement or contract with Attorney William F. Ward of Rothman Gordon, PC. for professional services to assist in the legal representation of the Citizens Police Review Board for a period of three years. Said agreements or contracts shall not exceed $45,000 per year for years 2020, 2021, and Public Works Committee, Mr. Coghill is the Chair. We have new papers. We have Bill Number 7. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Directors of the Departments of Public Works and Finance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Duquesne Light Company to provide a permanent construction easement for the improvement of the Riazzi Power Substation in the central Oakland neighborhood and a license to maintain a swath of land at the base of the hill to improve long-term stormwater control of the city property in Shinley Park, which also affects the substation. Bill Number 42. Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Allegheny Crane Rental in the Amount of $88,150 for Emergency Work at Penn Avenue and 10th Streets. Bill Number 43. Resolution Granting unto AT&amp;T their successors and assigns the privilege, license to construct and maintain and use at their own cost and expense six antennas to the facade of the building at 240 Fourth Avenue in the 1st Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 46. Resolution Granting unto Carnegie Mellon University their successors and assigns the privilege, license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a retaining wall along Fillmore Street and Forbes Avenue and a tree pit at 4665 Forbes Avenue in a 4th Ward, 8th Council District. Human Resources Committee, Mr. Kraus is the Chair. We have Bill Number 48. Resolution Amending Resolution 151 of 2019, which authorize the City of Pittsburgh to enter into professional services agreements and/or contracts with consultants and/or service providers for professional services in connection with civil service and MPOETC Required Assessment and Evaluation of Public Safety Candidates. Cost not to exceed $160,000 for an increase to cover services in 2020. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wilson is the Chair. We have new papers. We have Bill Number 40. Resolution Further Amending Resolution 797 of 2017 Effective December 2017 As amended entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by making an amendment and name change to City Council Line Items and authorizing a subsequent agreement for operation and administrative expenses on behalf of the residents of the City of Pittsburgh. This bill is sponsored by Council President Teresa Kell Smith. Bill Number 41. Resolution Further Amending Resolution 863 of 2018 Effective January 2019 As amended entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by amending various City Council CDBG unspecified local option line items. This piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilmembers Wilson, Kraus, and Council President Kell Smith. Bill Number 53. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an agreement with agencies to provide rapid rehousing activities, including rental assistance and housing relocation and stabilization services as associated with emergency solutions grant funds. Cost not to exceed $240,625. Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair. We have new papers and we have Bill Number 47. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a cooperation and license agreement with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to authorize the inclusion of designated city properties in the land care program and to further authorize reimbursement payments for the services of the URA and its contractors. That concludes the reading of the legislation up for preliminary approval. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to today's Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, January 29, 2020. Our first order of business is public comment. Anyone wishing to comment before City Council has three minutes to speak. Please give your name and neighborhood for the record. The green light will indicate you have three minutes. The yellow light indicates you have one minute and the red light indicates your time is up. Will the first speaker please come forward? First speaker, please. Last call for first speaker. Ms. Brown is coming forward.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. I didn't want to go first because I wasn't prepared, but I do want to make sure you understand that yesterday I was saying in loving memory of David Holmes, who was our President of the Senate Council up at Katy River. That's the senior citizen home. Kimberly Knight, she was a younger woman. She passed away. And Linda Parker. Linda Parker, as I said, was the wife of my brother's foster brother. And I was on the elevator yesterday and there was a white woman. And I say the color so you understand who they were, okay? She was a white woman and I spoke to her and then she was saying, as we talked, I said to her, "Are you, you live here?" She said, "Yes." "I moved into Linda Parker's apartment. I heard that she was a very nice person." I said, "Yes, she was." And she said, "I can feel it in the apartment. I can feel like it was a place of peace." Now, I also said Barbara Tucker. For the people on Whiteside Road, Barbara Tucker was the family, there was, I know at least three girls because Barbara Tucker was the oldest one and of, just go talking again, Gloria Jones. And she was, they had three sisters. They would come and take good care of her. You had one washer clothes and the other one. She had a beautiful apartment. And her sister is Gloria Jones. Everybody knew Gloria. She was the, Barbara Tucker was the oldest sister, but she didn't look like, she looked like she was in her 50s and she was 70 something then. And these are people formerly from Whiteside Road. Also, I wanted to make sure you, the city workers, knew that Alfred died. Alfred had been taking care of the park. Remember, he lived up over Almaz, I can't think, I'm talking too fast, but anyway, he passed. I knew him. He was, he's a heavy man, but he was skinnier than me when I met him 53 years ago because my son was five days old when I moved on Rowley Street. Also, I wanted to say, I seen this, Mr. Burgess ain't here because this is for him. It says, "Where was God when you, when the abuse was happening?" Burgess, the Reverend, needs to know that. Anytime, he can stop me from speaking because I tell her to keep her mouth shut. She's making $58,000 a year, won't come to the meetings, but can talk when I talk. And then when I say something, he took away my civil rights and liberties because you gave us three minutes and she's supposed to keep her mouth shut. And, and him too. And you know what? I told him that I looked at him in a different way. I thought he was a poor man, got a business, didn't, but he's thinking like a rich man because don't think about us poor people. Anytime, he can say that them foreigners could beat up them women and you don't, you give him a misdemeanor. I'm gone.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Dr. Ronaldan Miller, Oakland, University of Oxford educated, University of Pittsburgh, instructor, global societies, modern Israel, Japan, and the USA, theory of sport, science and technology, among other courses which I taught, Cathedral of Learning, first floor, one of the most beautiful places in my view anywhere in academe. The Global Intelligence Society candidate for President of the United States 2020. We're interested in, in offering the best information at the highest level of intelligence. That's what the GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org website is to, to offer to you. Neither Trump Nationally 2020 nor Paduto Locally 2021 are primary campaign foci. I don't think they should be. For myself, the prime focus is the elitist exclusionary DPRP system that doesn't secure the vote via vote voter receipt and that doesn't consistently support freedom of speech in local public comment. There are a lot of problems here with public comment with this council. From the GII, and the Global Intelligence Information Network, which I founded, in, beginning in May, I will be presenting via online seminars and offline seminars and online webinars, abstract global intelligence theory, global intelligence applications for US and world problems, my public comments, 2010 to 2020, and Gen Sex Identity Formation. They all coincide, will coincide with publication of my books on those subjects. A concern of this council is sexism in Pittsburgh and the United States. On the 2nd of November, 1920, after passage of Amendment 19, females participated for the first time in a US presidential election because for 130 years, the flawed US Constitution permitted the exclusion of women from voting, institutionalizing political sexism at every level of our governments. In the century since, the Democratic Party in this city has not aggressively promoted a female to Pittsburgh mayor. Why is everybody so shy? Because the Democratic Party trashes Gen Sex political abuse, but hypocritically tolerates it? Does the, did the Democratic Party support Woodhull in 1872? The first woman to do so. No, they discouraged her. Did they welcome Shirley Chisholm in 1972? No, McGovern pushed her to the door. Hillary Rodham Clinton in 2004, Kerry wanted her to stop speaking. Is the Democratic Party, I want to know, now behaving similarly toward Elizabeth Warren nationally and Deb Gross locally?
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Last call for speakers. Thank you. We will now move on to our Standing Committee agenda. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Mrs. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
President Kell Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
And Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Nine members present.
There has been a request to allow Public Safety to go first, which is chaired by Mr. O'Connor. Would a clerk please read the first bill?
Bill Number 50. Resolution Amending Resolution Number 849 of 2019, which authorized the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into an amended professional services agreement with Intime Solutions, Inc. for EMS and police scheduling and timekeeping services at a, at a cost not to exceed $863,525. Resolution Number 849 is being amended in order to correct JDE job numbers.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. This is just a technical amendment to the JDE. Obviously, there was a bill last year and we're just making a technical amendment to it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes. Bill 51, please.
Bill 51. Resolution Amending Resolution 50, which authorize the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with Cover Your Assets LLC by extending the term of the agreement in order for the pending RFP process to be completed.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Quick discussion. This is usually, this is our annual allocation for Cover Your Assets. This is the secondary employee, employment process where our officers can go online and sign up for extra events, whether it's at the arenas or other employment options that they have to do secondary employment. And this is the Cover Your Assets, which I believe we do every year.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes. Bill 52.
Bill 52. Resolution Authorizing the Citizen Police Review Board to enter into an agreement with Attorney William F. Ward of Rothman Gordon, PC. for professional services to assist in the legal representation of the Citizen Police Review Board for a period of three years. Said agreement shall not exceed $45,000 per year for 2020, 21, and 22, subject to the annual allocation by City Council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
This is obviously the Citizens Police Review Board. As everybody knows, Beth is here, but this is for a contract for them to hire their own solicitor.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Bill passes. We will now move back to our Finance and Law Committee chaired by myself. Would a clerk please read Bill 22?
Bill 22. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes Amusement Tax. Definitions to Update and Language in the City Code.
I please have a motion to hold for one week, I believe?
Motion, hold one week, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held for one week. Bill 49?
Bill 49. Resolution Providing for an Agreement for Payment of the City's Share of the 2020 Operating Expenses to the Allegheny County Central Tax Collection District for Tax Collection. Cost not to exceed $8,930.81.
I please have a motion?
Motion to approve?
This is our annual payment to Cover Jordan Assets, who does our tax collection. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes. Bill 57.
Bill 57. Ordinance Amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title II Fiscal Article V Special Funds. The City of Pittsburgh's Parks Trust Fund to Conform with the Home Rule Charter Article IX In Order to Establish the Creation of the Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund.
Please have a motion?
Motion for, what I'd like to, well, yeah, what I'd like to do is make a motion to hold for legal counsel on this.
Second.
Second.
We already have a, we already have a legal opinion.
There's no discussion.
I don't have a legal opinion.
There's no discussion.
What the motion was to hold for legal opinion?
Yes.
There's actually no discussion on the motion. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
It's Dane.
Bill passes. Bill is held for a legal opinion.
Can I, can I just say something? There actually is conversation during a hold. Yes, there is. Let's have it.
So, there's a legal opinion that we'll forward to come through in the next hour. It's one, it's already been prepared, it's already done.
Excuse me, isn't this, yeah. Why are we talking about this?
Because I can.
Can he?
Sure, yeah.
Yes.
And so, I can, you can't shut me up. So, I will, I'll, I'll.
I'm just looking to go by procedure, that's all.
We'll, we'll forward the legal opinion to you in the next hour. It's already been done.
Do ask for one, you get that.
Would a clerk please read Bill 58?
Bill 58. Resolution Authorizing the Creation of a Parks Tax Task Force.
Motion? Any motion?
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
So, what I had intended on doing is tabling this and I'd like to have a little bit of discussion about it. I want to make sure that council is having their input and say, on some of the things that are going on. And I know that all of us are very passionate about that. We all have very strong opinions about how this should be handled. Councilman Coghill did a great amount of work on, on his presentation that he was going to do today. Councilman Burgess did a lot of work on, on his opinions and the presentation he was going to do today. But I think that the bottom line is, everybody wants to see council step up to the plate and handle this, working together with the administration to make sure that we are yielding the best results for our residents, the taxpayers of the City of Pittsburgh. And that means that sometimes we have to bend a little bit. And so, although I'd like to see a task force in place, I think that what I'd like to see, and if everyone's agreeable, is to have Councilman Coghill and Councilman Burgess, because you have such strong opinions and are very, both are very knowledgeable on what you can do legally and what you'd like, what we'd like to see happen. And so, I'd like to see you work together with the administration, come up with some drafts, and then bring it back to council for briefings so that we can all have our input and all have our say on what we'd like to see happen at this, in the end. In the end, we all have our say anyway because we're going to have our vote, right? But I think that we, what I know I have said from the very beginning, day one, not one dime of this taxpayer money should leave the City of Pittsburgh without the approval of the people that are elected to oversee the budget. And that is this council. And so, I don't care, I mean, you can put a lot of different things in place there, but to me, that is the bottom line, is that the public controls their public dollars and that's through us. And so, as long as that, that's the end result, I'd be happy to work with all of you. And I'll tell you, if it's not the end result, I think that you'll hear a different conversation. But I think that we all pretty much feel the same way. I mean, I think we all want what's best. And I'd really like to see us work together on some of this for the betterment of the public. So, if everyone's agreeable to that, then that's what I'm going to do. So, I'm going to make a motion to table, but I'm just looking up and down, is everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
If that's what we end up doing.
I'll second your motion, Councilwoman.
Okay. Motion to table.
We need a roll call vote.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. None.
Yes and no notes.
It is tabled. We now need to move on to our invoices.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved.
Do we have?
No.
No P, okay.
Yeah, we have P cards.
No, and we do have P cards. Those are before members, so I need a motion to approve the P cards.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the P cards? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. We have done Public Safety, moving on to Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. Would a clerk please read the first bill?
Bill Number 7. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works and Finance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Duquesne Light Company to provide, one, a permanent construction easement for the improvement of the Riazzi Power Substation in the central Oakland neighborhood, and, two, a license to maintain a swath of land in the base of the hill to improve long-term stormwater control of the city property Shinley Park, which also affects the substation.
A motion to approve for brief conversation. I noted Duquesne Light folks are here with us. I didn't know if you wanted to join us up here and if folks had questions.
Very brief discussion, if I may.
Paul, come on in.
Good morning, welcome.
Come to the table.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Take your name and position for the record.
Say my neighborhood, too. Krysha Kubiyak. I am Director of State Regulatory Strategy and Government Affairs for Duquesne Light Company, and I live in Skrill Hill.
If, if you would, just very brief presentation for the council so they can conceptualize what we're doing here. I'll make a few brief comments.
Would you like to start or you want me to begin?
No, if you would, please.
Sure. What is in front of council is the fact that we're asking for a small strip of land on the side of a piece of property that Duquesne Light owns on Boundary Street and the corner, the corner of John Care and Boundary where we are building a new substation. The substation is to assist with the load, we're already overcapacitated, out of Oakland and CMU into that part of the, all the hospitals and the institutions of learning in that area, and also for resiliency and redundancy. So, as we look forward to a world that is changing, that has issues with climate change and cybersecurity, we want to make sure we have two feeds into Oakland to make sure that we can backfeed that area.
So, just for the council's own edification, I will not dismiss that this has not been somewhat controversial. There have been five community meetings so far, two that we have hosted directly through the office, three that were hosted by Duquesne Light, but we're working through, we're taking a lot of input. There's still some minor reservation, but we understand the, the importance of the substation to provide the necessary power for burgeoning Oakland, we get that. Some of the reservations that have been expressed are that the substation does border a residential area known as the Hollow. border a residential area known as, um, um, the Hollow.
Panther Hollow?
Panther Hollow, thank you. Um, and so, uh, we've had a little bit of pushback, but we're working directly to resolve, uh, what needs to be resolved, to make certain that we can provide what needs to be provided in terms of power through Oakland. So I'm asking the council to approve today, uh, with the understanding that we will continue to work closely through the entire process. Thank you.
Any other further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you.
Bill is approved. Bill forty-two?
Bill forty-two, resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Allegheny Crane Grentle in the amount of eighty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for emergency work at Penn Avenue and Tenth Street.
A motion to approve for brief discussion?
Need a second?
Second.
Counselman Strasburger, second.
Sorry.
See you, guys.
Discussion? Councilman?
Yes, um, no, I, I mean, I don't have any questions on this, uh, give it to the floor.
Any discussion from any other members? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved, Bill forty-three?
Bill forty-three, resolution granting unto AT&amp;T their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense six antennas to the facade of the building at two forty Fourth Avenue in the first ward, sixth council district.
You have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, very brief discussion.
Need a second?
Second.
Councilman?
Councilman Kraus?
Are you good?
Yes.
Can you just bring us up to speed, just a little, I'm always a little leery about antennas being installed and the purpose of them and those kinds of things, can you give me just a brief overview?
I'm not specif, I'm aware of the project, but I'm not deep in the weeds, I would probably need someone from the administration to speak to it.
It's okay, can you do it for Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes. Bill forty-five?
Bill forty-five, resolution granting unto University of Pittsburgh their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a storm-water runoff mitigation rain garden at thirty-five fifty Terrence Street in the fourth ward, eighth council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes, Bill forty-six.
Bill forty-six, resolution granting unto Carnegie Mellon University, CDFD, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a retaining wall along Field Moore Street and Forbes Avenue, and a tree pit at forty-six sixty-five Forbes in the fourth ward, eighth council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes. Uh, that brings us to Human Resources Committee chaired by Mr. Kraus, first bill?
Bill forty-eight, resolution amending Resolution one fifty-one, which authorize the city to enter into a professional services agreement with consultants and/or service providers for professional services in connection with civil service and MPEO ETC required assessment and evaluation of the public safety candidates by increasing the total amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty thousand dollars to cover services in 2020.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Brief, very brief discussion, please. Director, good morning, welcome. How are you today?
I'm fine.
Good, thanks for being here.
Good morning, Happy New Year, City Council. Um, so this resolution.
Please your name?
Janet Manuel, Director of Human Resources and Civil Service, my apologies. So this respective resolution before you is, in the amount of covering psychological testings that we have to do for our respective scheduled, uh, police academies, and so just you are aware that there are three scheduled police academies for the year of 2020, the first will be in March, the second will be in June, and the final will be in November. And so this dollar amount, um, for the respective services that we are asking you, that I'm asking you to approve, will allow us to be able to process over four hundred and fifty candidates for psychological testing.
Great, thanks for your work, Director.
Thank you.
I'm happy to support. Councilman Coghill?
Hi, Director.
Good morning.
Yeah, just a simple question, the hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that's just for psychological training, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, for how many?
Uh, it will be able, it will allow us to process over four hundred and fifty candidates.
You hire out a professional psychologist, I guess, is that what you do, or?
That is correct, we have them.
Okay, just one, or?
No, there's six.
There's six psychologists that kind of analyze the recruits and say, hey, he's, or she's good, or she's not.
He or she is, that is correct.
Right, okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I just, um, briefly want to say, you know, a lot of us have been hearing a lot about the police contract, and, you know, council, as many people know, council's unable to negotiate contracts, that's not, um, we're not legally able to get involved in that. But I do want to say that when you hear officers saying that we spend so much money on other things, you know, and you see these items coming forward, and you wonder why they cannot, um, receive a higher pay than what they do, and Reverend Burgess has said a million times, we can't possibly pay our officers enough, um, but I do want to say that I, I think council and, uh, a lot of us would like to see our officers, and, and, I mean, fortunately, I'm not in those negotiations, because I'd probably give away everything we had, we'd be bankrupt. So, I think that a lot of us feel that way, but it, it's good that we have more responsible people in charge of the budget, uh, I mean, in, in those negotiations, uh, but I can't, I want to say that I don't think that there's a job where we could pay, or an amount that we could pay our officers for the job that they do every day. And so I'm, I'm sad to see all this division that's, that's occurring right now, and I'm hopeful that, that there's some resolution where the police officers feel more valued, and the, um, public feels safe, and the administration feels as if they've done a great job in negotiating. Somehow there's, there's some happy compromise here, I know it, and I just hope that we reach that, and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, you know, I just want to compliment, compliment you, uh, Councilwoman Kiel Smith, for, for intervening, you know, that our police officers are, uh, you know, do feel really undercut, uh, the deal doesn't seem, they're not happy with it, but, uh, I know that our council president will work with the administration, and I hope work something out for them.
And I want us to say, Councilman Coghill and I did go meet with the FOP, and so, I mean, I think we all share concerns about the, this, the status of the current situation.
Burgess?
Um, certainly, I am always been, I have advocated and I've always supported higher wages for the police, I've been consistent with that since I've been a member of council. Someone who risks their life, uh, for service of others, there is no amount, uh, which that is worth, and so that is un, that's priceless, and so I have, I have always said that. But at the same time, since we're having this conversation, I do want to at least remind my friends, um, in the police force, um, that, um, one of the ways in which you can inden, engender goodwill, uh, to our city, um, even though you are allowed to, is not to move out of our city. Um, I've done everything in my power, including by referendum, to say that police should live in the City of Pittsburgh. And so, even though, um, unfortunately, um, a lawsuit was filed that allowed our officers to move outside our city, that will not lead to good police officers, it will not lead to good policing. It is better for police to live with the people whom they police, to see them in the grocery store, to see them off-duty in various, in the schools and various places, and so, um, I, I support the police a thousand percent in terms of their wages. I also would urge them, uh, from the bottom of my heart, to live inside the city with the rest of the city employees and with the rest of the city residents. If you do that, um, and make a commitment to that, um, you will have a stronger commitment for me.
Do something.
Thank you, any other discussion for first round? Seeing none, Councilwoman Smith?
I'm just gonna, I hopefully end it with this conversation, I hear what you're saying about residency, and it was a concern for me as well, as you know, I stood with you on that, but I would say, maybe we can encourage our officers by, to live in the city by offering some housing incentives, and so maybe that's something this council can work on. Thank you, that's it.
Certainly. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development chaired by Mr. Wilson, uh, first bill?
Bill number forty, resolution further amending Resolution number seven ninety-seven, which adopting and approving the twenty eighteen capital budget, and the twenty eighteen CDBG program, the twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-three capital improvement program by making an amendment and name change to City Council line items and authorizing a subsequent agreement for operation administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve?
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes, Bill forty-one?
Bill forty, forty-one, resolution further amending Resolution number eight sixty-three, by amending various City Council CDBG unspecified local option line items and authorizing a subsequent agreement for operation administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes, uh, Bill fifty-three?
Bill fifty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with agencies to provide rapid rehousing activities, including rental assistance and housing relocation and stabilization services, as associated with the Emergency Solutions Grant Fund at a cost not to exceed two hundred forty thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing, Councilwoman Strasburger?
Um, I'd just like to learn a little bit more about where this is, um, being housed, no pun intended.
No, no, no.
Is there someone who can talk to you?
Is there someone from the administration here to discuss this?
Talk a little more about this?
Please come forward.
Please give your name and title for the record?
Sure, David Hutchinson, Assistant Director, Capital and Asset Management. Um, this piece is also related to another piece, I believe it's zero zero five zero, um, under Land Use and Economic Development, to accept a state ESG or emergency solutions grant award. Um, this piece allows us to go under contract with Oberly, who is an organization that applied, um, to be our service provider for those funds.
Great. That mostly answers my question, but I'm happy to hear more if there's more to share, and I realized that you had, um, offered a private, um, briefing to all council members, and I didn't take you up on that, so I appreciate you coming to the table now, but, um, Oberly will manage, it's built into one of their existing programs, or a new program for them, existing program?
Yes, uh, my name's Liz Daniels-Totten, I'm with the Office of Management and Budget. Um, it's an expansion on services that they already offer, so they already offer rapid rehousing programs through a different source of funding, this is a competitive source of funding that we applied for through the state that will allow them to serve more people. Um, they're operating out of their, uh, offices on Wood Street.
Mm-hmm, and they do great work, I am starting to see more and more redundancies between, not even redundancies, because we're all, it's, there's, there's an infinite amount of work we could do in these areas, but with the Housing Opportunity Fund and the URA and this kind of thing, and I know that, um, in speaking with the URA director, who's brand-new, and, you know, their team, that they, and, and also the mayor's team, that there's a desire to coordinate more of our activities, so it's not something coming out of City Hall, something, something, something similar but separate coming out of the URA, and it seems like, um, an example of that. I understand that in this case, this is a grant that needs to be, um, kept separate, perhaps, from the Housing Opportunity Fund and their, their source of funding, but, um, just wanted to raise that for, for our future conversation around, uh, what can be, um, considered for consolidation.
Absolutely, we actually met in two thousand nineteen with Jessica Smith-Perry from the URA, specifically to discuss eligibility with the HOF program, to make sure that what they were doing, that, as great as these grants are, that you're kind of waiting until you're pretty far along in the process of, um, eviction, or you're pretty far in areas of, um, your rent payments, so what they wanted to do was to be able to assist sooner than that.
Mm-hmm.
So that we have more of a, a true continuum of care like we have with the, the county as well, so that before you need the ESG money, HOF, or portions of HOF can be an option to you.
Okay, great, so we're coordinating, but I still see room for, for more of that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, definitely, my, my defense, from both the Community Development Office, um, yeah, I think what we're trying to do is to make sure that the funding stream doesn't drive the decision-making, but the other way around, so that, you know, we continue to coordinate with the departments, so that they're, we're more proactive versus just responding, you know, to state grants, like grant options, which are important, this is the first DCD, ESG grant that the city had received in four years, five years?
Five.
Five years, so, you know, it's a good thing, it's positive, but yet, yeah, there's more work to be done.
Thank you all for your work on this, and for explaining it to me.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, um, and I want to say thank you, we've got a variety of social service, um, organizations in our kind of social safety net, um, network in Pittsburgh that has been very helpful to my office several times, and the mayor's office helped coordinate those efforts, um, in the last year. Do you have a sense of if our issues are getting worse, or better, or staying the same? I mean, this specifically is in the emergency services, re, rapid rehousing, as you mentioned, um, so we're really dealing with the homelessness, or people on the verge of eviction. In some senses, we haven't had the mass evictions that other cities have had, um, so I just, it's, you know, it's kind of, you know, we've had our, our discussions on it at length over the last few years, but I'm just wondering if you have any feedback from the field that you could share with us today?
We should have some more data pretty soon, the point in time count is tonight and tomorrow, um, which is kind of our annual, um, check with, within different parts of the community, people physically go out, um, to try and figure out what our current population of need is.
Yeah.
So we should have more information pretty soon on how we did compared to last year.
I'll share just a really short story, um, again, last year, uh, there was, uh, unbeknownst to most Bloomfield residents, including, and myself as the representative, there was a building on Liberty Avenue, right in the heart of the Business District of Bloomfield, that had for decades been single-room occupancy, so above a little bookstore, um, no one realized that there were people living in rooms, they were only three hundred dollars a month, um, it was not great conditions, right? And then the building changed hands, and the new building owner, uh, was very, very, um, engaged in trying to re-home, find new housing for the, that was all, um, men, uh, fourteen men who were living upstairs, and, um, it was difficult, right? So, right, imagine, like, you're in the heart of Bloomfield, you can walk right across the street to two little tiny grocery stores, you've, you've got every bus line in the road in the world, it seems like, coming right down Liberty Avenue, you've got, um, really easy access to all the county assistance that is housed downtown, um, as well as a robust social network, because it's just a lively, active neighborhood street, um, and I think only one or two of those people were able to be rehoused in the city boundary, you know? So, in just one site, um, we lost twelve residents, um, and it's just, I think, and it's just, like, one more example of how we are losing population, because we're not providing affordable housing, that fits a different people's needs, these people did not need full apartments, they weren't even capable really of cooking for themselves, right? So they, this really was a kind of situation that fit their needs, and it was, it took many months and lots of effort of a lot of people trying to find homes, sometimes contacting contacting family members in other states who were, traveled across states to come and, and get the, the individual, um, and working with Catholic charities, all kinds of different things. Um, and, um, it's, so it just is one of the things that I've been wanting to share, that, uh, you mentioned as well, that your Oberly is housed in Wood Street Commons, and I toured it recently as well. It is also a single-room occupancy. There, especially when we're striving for housing first and rapid rehousing, there are some kinds of accommodations that work for some people, and that can be, um, it's just a housing form that we've long overlooked. And I, incidentally, in the nineteen nineties, wrote half a dissertation on boarding and lodging houses, which are single-room occupancies. So it's just always been a favorite topic of mine. So thank you for indulging me, but I just wanted to share how, you know, we, this is, this loss of housing and search for rehousing, um, would be a lot easier if we just had more housing and, and, which is, some of our colleagues have been trying to tell us for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes. I believe that moves us on to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Gross. The first bill was bill forty-seven, only bill?
Bill forty-seven. Resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into a corporation and license agreement with the URA to authorize the inclusion of designated city properties in the land care program to provide emer- emer- authorize, to further authorize reimbursement payments for the services of the URA and its contractors.
Motion to approve a discussion?
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to bring up, um, members of the mayor's office who are here to speak to this program, and while they're coming up?
URA's here.
Oh, Linds, yeah, Linds, are you, you're a, your mayor's office now? I thought so. Thank you, councilman. And who else? Oh, and David Geiger's here as well. So what you have, well, I'll just say, um, as I mentioned to, um, uh, our testifiers here, there are things that councilpeople really care about, right? Taking care of these vacant properties, right? Vacant properties in general, um, and then also kind of where these services are going to be rendered, and, and kind of like what the details of the cooperative agreement are going to be about. It doesn't say in the title, but it says in your text file that this is up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over a term of two years. Um, so I'll let you all briefly describe the program, and you can introduce yourselves for us. Let's start.
David Geiger, Government Affairs, URA.
Lindsay Powell, Assistant Chief of Staff to the mayor.
Tim Dolan, Real Estate Department at the URA.
Thank you. So, so one, want to kind of just describe this maybe a little bit better than I did, or the title does?
Do you want to give an overview of land care to the council? Tim, if you want to give an overview of land care, and then I can talk a little bit more about the city parcels that are included.
Sure. So the URA's land care program, uh, we work with local neighborhood-based contractors to steward URA-owned land across the city. Um, at the moment, we have about fourteen hundred parcels in the land care program, spread across the entire city, serviced by eleven different contractor firms. All of our firms this year are MW and/or DBE firms. Uh, many of them are, we're in the current fourth year of the program. Um, many of them have been here since the beginning. We've had, um, some contractors spin off and form their own firms that are still in the program again. Program focuses not only on maintenance, but accountability. We have a public accountability map on the URA's website, where contractors use a web-based technology to report on the work they've done, take photos, and anyone can look on our website and see the date of property was last serviced, by whom, and see the photos. Um, we also comb through those results to find any sort of outstanding things that may need to be taken care of, like abandoned vehicles, excessive dumping, and then address that internally.
Can you, um, tell us kind of how long you've been doing that? Because it's, I've been here six years, and it wasn't that long ago that we were not doing such robust, or the URA was not doing such robust.
So this is the fourth year of the program, that we just started, um, this fall, well, sorry, fall of twenty nineteen.
Right. And, um, you had, you said seven firms, all city?
Eleven firms.
Eleven firms? All city?
Mm.
And city employees? Do you do that kind of?
So they are all, um, city firms. Um, the, there is one that we work with, Center for Employment Opportunities, is a nationwide organization, but they have a base here in Pittsburgh at one hundred Ross Street.
Okay, so you work for the URA? You work for land care?
I work for the URA.
You work for the URA?
Where the land care program is housed.
And the land care is a program of the URA?
Correct.
Not an independent organization?
Correct.
Um, and so the, how are you funded in the URA? With this money? Yeah, how is the URA funding your position and your, your program?
So?
Do you raise separate money, or how does that work?
We have done that through, um, Pago funds, as well as some internal leased land funds in the past.
Pago meaning URA revenue, or meaning city revenue?
Revenue that goes.
City dollars.
Got it, got it, got it, got it. So, um, this council transferring money to the URA to pay for that program?
It's inclusive currently.
And? Great. And has it been, like, at the same scale, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, or is this different than the way it has been working? This, this bill in front of us is for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over two year.
So our current property maintenance, URA-wide, um, for land care is about six to seven hundred thousand dollars.
Six, I am glad I asked. So this would be, so you did, per year?
Mm-hmm.
Six to seven hundred thousand dollars a year in cleaning, mowing, vacant properties?
Uh, yeah, it's monthly, so once a month, all contractors go out and survey the land, document that they were there, um, take care of the property as needed, and in months when maybe there's not snow or a lot of growth going on, say in November, they're still going out monthly and doing the reporting that there's, um, what the conditions are on the properties.
Okay, so you've been spending six or seven hundred thousand dollars a year of the money that council gives you at the kind of like year-end transfer of funds? I thought it was all CDBG that we've been giving the URA, but I guess there was Pago as well. Um, and then, uh, this is an additional reimbursement for services of the URA.
So this particular money will go towards, uh, city parcels, city-owned parcels that have not been included in this program at all. The idea is that we'll have another mechanism as the city of Pittsburgh to do more land maintenance. We'll still have three-one-one, we'll still have city source, we'll still have DPW, but this is a way that for our more visible, um, parcels, the ones that are major thoroughfares, the ones that are walks to school, the ones that are on our major streets, that these properties will be maintained regularly, so that you're not, as a resident, calling about something on Penn Avenue, calling on something about, uh, Frankstown Avenue, and it's not getting done. Um, with this particular program, you're able to see on an app, um, this, a before-and-after picture that, you know, the parcel that you called about was done on, you know, January twenty-eighth at two PM. You can see what it looked like before, um, and we have a way to really track that the work is being done, and that residents can visibly see, um, uh, the parcel that they requested cleaned up.
That's wonderful. So I, I really appreciate that the administration has included journey to school, um, because we want to make sure that we've worked on pedestrian safety. It's been a concern of a lot of council members that, uh, the routes to school were not thought about in terms of traffic calming, pedestrian safety, and there's been tremendous improvements that Domi has done, and so, um, taking care of the vacant lots around those, um, routes is also welcome. Um, and so maybe, uh, you can tell us a little bit more about kind of how many parcels that are, and how did you choose them, and do you have maps of those as well?
Yeah, we can also provide everyone with maps, um, but essentially it's about four hundred parcels, three hundred and ninety-three parcels, um, in total. They're all across the city. Um, how we selected them was we wanted, again, those major thoroughfares, uh, we wanted flat, um, lands that were easier for contractors to get to. Um, visibility as well was key for us, so again, those things, those, um, streets that you see, that the resident would see constantly, uh, vacant land, so none of the contractors are going to structured or dangerous, um, spaces. Uh, and the last piece was, we wanted to ensure that with the inclusion of city parcels, we were able to open up more opportunities for businesses. Um, so frankly, we added in a lot of work in the West End that wasn't there before, because we own a lot of, the city owns a lot of land, um, in the West End, and we wanted to make sure that businesses had an opportunity to go out there and get serviced as well.
Yeah, just for clarity, for everybody's consistency, uh, the URA owns how many parcels?
In total?
Yeah. They don't owns fourteen thousand, because we just had the post-agenda on vacant properties that Councilwoman Smith had motioned for, and, um, the controller and, um, Director Lanier clarified that there was only a few hundred that were actually technically owned by the URA?
We can get back to you with a listing and sort of the status of ownership, or if we're just holding it. I mean, we can break that out for you.
Yeah, so the ones that kind of just in a database somewhere say URA next to them, but were, they're technically not transferred from the city to the URA, I, I think are probably a lot of the fourteen thousand parcels that you have in your list.
It said fourteen thou, or, sorry, fourteen hundred, not fourteen thousand.
Fourteen hundred makes a lot more sense. I think my ears are not working right today, so again, you, you started off on your description, fourteen hundred parcels?
Correct.
And eleven firms. I got both of those numbers wrong, I apologize. Um, so that makes a lot more sense. Okay. I'll, I'll see the floor, thank you.
Thank you. We have Councilwoman Kraus, followed by Councilwoman Strasburger.
Okay, thank you, thanks. So, um, I think, Tim, you're going to understand a lot of the arguments that I'm going to make here, be- because of your experience with the Hilltop Alliance and, and housing stabil- stabilization, correct, was your, your role there?
We call it property stabilization, but yes.
Yeah, but even better, uh, even better for the discussion. Um, I'm, I'm beginning my thirteenth year of, uh, of having the honor of sitting at this table, and this topic is still a point of contention throughout the city. Uh, and we have tried various ways to, to resolve, um, our obligation to maintain property that we have inherited. I don't like to necessarily say that we own the property, uh, in that, um, much of it has been left or abandoned, and so then taxpayers unfortunately assume the responsibility to care for it, uh, and part of our obligation here is then to find ways that we can care for these properties. And when you lose half of your population, you can imagine, uh, just how, um, vast that challenge is. I'm very much interested in, um, seeing the list of properties and how they were determined and where they're going to live, uh, and how we're going to provide results. Um, every, every attempt to date that we have tried, we have not been successful. We just haven't been. We haven't. Um, and the, you know, the, the number one call I used to get used to be around parking. It is far exceeded now by either waste management, neglected property, abandoned houses, or things that need to be demoed. So I'm, I'm finding myself in this position of having to manage decline, and I do not want to be in a position where what I get to do here is manage decline. Uh, I want to begin to see results, uh, and, um, I'm not a hundred percent convinced this is the only avenue by which we're going to get there. It's, it's a start, uh, but, um, I think a lot of my, I know a lot of my frustration is, um, the reactionary tactics that we take as opposed to, uh, proactive approaches. We, we tend to react to something when it's seven feet high, and we've gotten numerous phone calls about it, as opposed to getting out there when it's seven inches high, and we could have cut it for one-tenth the effort and one-tenth the cost. Uh, and we shouldn't be out there in August and September, we should be out there in March and April, and that's, you know, where a lot of my frustration lies. So, um, I, I, I will vote this, uh, but I, I want a much bigger discussion on, on what our commitment is to managing properties, especially south and west of the river, which the councilwoman and I will, um, attest to. Um, and so with the councilwoman's indulgence, I'm going to ask for further discussion in, in the form of a post-agenda, and perhaps you'll work with me and?
Be happy to.
And we'll, uh, we'll form a larger conversation about how to, um, how, if it, if it's lack of resource, then it's our obligation to provide resource. Uh, I'm not arguing that we're just going to sit here and throw money at it, but what we have attempted to do from January seven of two thousand and eight, when I came in here to now, we, we have not found success, and, uh, and I need to find a way to offer success. You know, there, there's, there's a real benefit to, to being called up for reelection, and to really get out there and spend weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks, pounding the pavements and walking through neighborhoods, and I, quite frankly, and I've shared this with Chief of Staff Gilman, I'm, I have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of photographs, and I'm just embarrassed and ashamed that I, I have to go to constituency and say, this is what you should accept. This is your lot in life, this is as good as it gets for you, we can't do any better for you, and you just simply have to accept it. And I just, I can't do that. I just can't.
Well, um, with adding these parcels is, is exactly to your point, councilman, of, of being proactive. How do we ensure that the places that we know our residents are going to see consistently are getting cut, getting mowed, getting shoveled, getting salted, all the time? Um, and that they, that residents have a way to be, um, have a way to have, to hold us accountable? Um, this ability for us to look at the work done, I think, is incredibly helpful. Um, we know oftentimes, um, with some of our work with three-one-one, we can't really, you know, track, uh, for a resident, yes, this lot was cut, yes, this tree was cut on this date, but this additional tool with land care helps us really have a visible presence for residents that they can, they can see right in front of them.
I appreciate we're victims of the weather at times, and I know last year especially, we had record rainfall, and, and, you know, the lots just sprung up overnight, and, you know, one day they were six inches, and two weeks later, they were three feet, and I, I understand all those, the, the limitations that we have, but a- again, it, it only goes so afar to, to continue to go back and say, you know, we're strapped by limitations, and we can't do better to manage. Uh, there's, sometimes I feel the stress, frustration of Councilwoman Kail Smith, where we, we find money for, for technology, and I understand the importance of technology, and I understand the importance of being a twenty-first century city and what it requires of us, and, and how to be effective in the jobs that we are asked to do, but some of it is just baseline. You know, government is formed for very basic reasons, right? Sweep the streets, pick up the garbage, you know, and, um, I'm afraid we've lost sight of sweep the streets and pick up the garbage. And, um, so, um, I'm, I'm going to push for that. I'm, I'm going to push really hard for that, uh, the next four years that I get the honor to sit here, because people deserve better than what we're able to do. And I'm not arguing by any means that somehow we don't have a commitment to want to do that, and I'm not, my remarks are not to chastise, my remarks are to enlighten and to say, you know this, Tim, you, you spent a whole lot of time up there dealing with what I'm arguing for, and I know you understand the enormity of the request that I'm making, but we have to do better, and I'm here to help. I'm not here to, to be, uh, obs- an obstructionist. I'm here to help, and I am going to challenge us that we're really going to get this to work much better. Thank you. Appreciate, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. I, um, it's my understanding that land care is a program that has kind of a dual purpose. One is obviously to maintain our properties or vacant properties, but the other is workforce readiness, business readiness, is that true? So I think it's really, in a lot of ways, a model, um, program, because it takes, um, it takes businesses that maybe aren't ready to bid on contracts with the city, with the URA, but it gives them the opportunity to have some contracts, have some ability to build their business, and to get the resources and the time and the care from, um, from the URA staff to, to help them with that process. I really see it, I mean, I wish we could scale it, and I, I understand it's incredibly resource-intensive. We had that conversation at the budget hearings to be able to scale that up and to maintain it, and so my hope is that, um, we can continue to find these efficiencies that I mentioned earlier between the city and the URA, and make the tweaks necessary to, you know, continue to fund this from the city's perspective, but also continue to fund, um, find, um, diverse streams of funding for the URA, so that we can build up programs like this, not just for everything that Councilwoman Kraus, um, highlighted, but for, for other reasons, for building businesses that are minority-owned, that are women-owned, so that they can get to the point where they are bil- bidding on larger contracts, for instance, around vacant lands, around other, um, issues that the city is, um, posting. So I don't know if you wanted to speak to any of that or the good work. I guess my question is, is the six hundred thousand that you mentioned, dollars that you mentioned specifically for the actual vacant property, uh, maintenance, or is some of that in, uh, does some of that go to, budgeted for this program, go to the, I guess, business development portion of it?
I just want to congratulate the URA, they've been scaling up this program, and a part of the money also goes to really wrapping the businesses around in, uh, capacity, built, helping them build capacity?
Capacity building is, is exactly what I meant, more than business development.
Yeah, and we've had actually that is, that same success, where a, um, uh, contractor that went through the land care program actually recently bid on, uh, was able to build and then bid on, uh, city contracts. So going through this contract, uh, going through this process, they were able to really kind of, um, develop their business, be able to kind of expand their capacity for, um, not just the owners, but their, their, their folks that they employ, and they were able to scale up and then, um, bid on larger contracts. So it's exactly that, making sure that we're able to not just give people an opportunity to do this, uh, particular job, but also wrapping them around with services so that they're able to expand.
And all of our, um, land care firms also have access to our Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship at the URA, so our small business lending and development TA resources. Um, we have at least one of our current firms is a, um, a loan recipient from that department, so just build up her business and grow.
To, to my question, is that, is part of the six hundred thousand that we mentioned earlier, do you know if that number is, is all for the vacant ma- um, land management, or is some of that?
It's the vacant land management solely.
Got it, just solely, and then additional resources are spent on the capacity building? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Something that we didn't touch on, but I think is also very important, there's obviously the transparency through the, um, the electronic reporting that, um, folks do, but there's also, um, we require our contractors to do two community touchpoints per month, so talking with the neighbor who neighbor who lives next door to the property they're maintaining, or going to a community meeting, either just to introduce themselves or just speak with those who are there, let them know who they are and that they're going to be out there every month. And then we also ask that they are on a community meeting agenda once per quarter, so they're actually presenting at some sort of meeting, whether that's a community group or a forum that you may have in your neighborhoods as well.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I keep changing my mind whether I want to talk or not talk. But I just, I'm thinking, there's so many efforts, I'm looking at all the things that we have, all the efforts that we have in the city to take care of land and vacant properties and just everything from A to Z. And I'm just wondering if there's, like, I've always been frustrated with the lack of collaboration and communication between those efforts. And I would love to see Councilwoman Gross, who chairs intergovernmental affairs, and Councilwoman Wilson, who chairs land use, work together on trying to, with all the various departments and trying to make sure that we're collaborating more and communicating better and yielding some of the results. Because it is so frustrating when you're living next to some of these properties, Councilwoman. I mean, my, I was looking at all the things over the years that we started, and I know that the land bank was one of the things that we started to address some of these things. But since I've been here, I started an anti-litter campaign, a clean sweep crew, the City Cuts program, and rewrote the disruptive property laws. And there's more, I'm just looking at the list, I'm thinking, all these efforts in having post-agendas after post-agenda and meeting after meeting, and the bottom line is we just want to see some cleaner neighborhoods and some results. It's just so frustrating, and it's frustrating to get the calls because we participate in all those things. We participate in cleanups, we participate in helping people, you know, fix up the properties next to them. And just hearing the, just the frustration of our residents. And I think part of it is because this administration has been successful, and people are seeing successes across the city, so now they want to see it in their neighborhood or next door to them. And so I think sometimes you're a victim of your success, but I think that people expect it and they should expect it. That's our job, our job is to take care of these things. And I think the frustration is when you see and you hear of all the great things happening in the East End and your, or in parts of the city where you're seeing things that people haven't seen in decades, and yet, and you're living next door to a house that's falling over and you can't get the grass cut on the property. So it's just those kinds of things. I think that it would be nice to see everyone collaborate, and I would love for the two of you to work on that, making sure that there's better communication. And, because I think the efforts are there, but how are we maximizing the best use of our resources to get the best results for our residents? That's it for me. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Cockhill?
I agree with Councilwoman Kraus, you know, getting to these lots before it gets six feet high is a major, major issue, because then it's a huge job then, and it's an all-day job for a crew of people. I like your approach, you're covering the main streets, which people see, and, you know, it still means we have a lot in the back channels and in the neighborhoods, and that's the calls I get. It's especially frustrating for me when somebody, we don't know who the owner is, it's private property, we cannot go onto it, we cite them, we cite them, they ignore it, and it goes to no man's land, and that's especially frustrating. But I love your approach as far as hitting the main roads, making sure that grass is cut. Basically, we're talking about landscapers here, right? Right? Yeah, so, and no existing structures, they, you don't take care of any of that, it's empty lots, clean them up, keep them clean, and, you know, at least when you're driving by, it's green space, so.
And the hope is that as we start with this pilot, we'll be able to really focus our 3-1-1 calls on those neighborhoods, those kind of lot next to the residents, that type of stuff, so we can really make sure that we're using our resources there where we know there are so many little pockets where we're missing opportunities to be better land.
I'm so glad you're focusing on this, I really am, because it's one thing when I get a call and there's a private owner that we can't get ahold of, but it's another thing if it's a city or URA-owned property, that's a reflection on me, so good work, I hope you're successful in all the lots.
Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks for coming to the table. I think you're really offering a solution to the problem that, or concerns that people are bringing up about vacant properties. And, you know, I think this is a proactive approach. I'm often reminded of a documentary that I saw, it's based in Centralia in Pennsylvania, where people would just cut the grass even though no one lives in the town because the, the ground is on, underneath the ground is on fire. It always resonated with me, the aerial shots of one man cutting the grass of several houses that are there. But I think that this is a great proactive approach and, you know, thank you for your efforts. I'm actually looking forward to seeing how we can expand the program.
Second round, Councilwoman Gross.
Just to wrap up, if members are done, that you mentioned, Ms. Powell, that you have a map of your parcels, and if you could at least provide them, if it's too difficult to get them onto the same map, color-coded, the same scale, so we can kind of compare, like, what has been done, like what you've got at the URA, and then the additional city properties, so that we can understand that. I think that would be helpful to members, so that they can look at their own districts. Okay, and we look forward to it, thank you.
Thank you. One quick comment, if I'm not mistaken, didn't we put together a website that also tracks the land that the URA is maintaining?
Yeah, yeah. And so, but this is for the additional parcels?
Right. Will the additional parcels also be a part of that website?
Yep.
Okay.
If we can, for us to know that which ones are the additional ones?
Right, we'll have to identify that, but I just wanted the public to know they actually can go on and see when the land has been maintained, so that if you're saying, well, it hasn't been maintained, we can go in real time and see if and when it actually was being maintained.
Also get a before and after picture, so you can say, you know, visibly see it's been done.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks, everybody.
Say none, bill passes. That is our last bill for today, which wraps up our agenda.
Thank you all.
Yes, Cory did want to register an aye vote before he left. I do have one meeting announcement, a reminder that the Cablecast Public Hearing for this afternoon has been rescheduled for February 19th at 2:30 PM. Yes, before adjourning, is there any comment from councilmembers? Councilman Burgess?
Before he goes into his. Okay, thank you. I just want to say that we're going to have, I know Councilwoman Kraus has chaired those public hearings, but if members want to cheer their own public hearings, I'm happy to do that too, so I wanted to make sure I talk to you about that.
Thank you.
Good.
Always, it's just the public comes to interact, you know? It's what we're about.
So then I think it's good, so I'll just say this, members can share their own public hearings, if for any reason you can't, please let us know, that's all. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry.
Burgess?
Yes, I talk sometimes publicly how Doug Shields was a mentor of mine when I was on council. I don't think I talk so much about how, when I was on council, that then Mayor Perdido, then Councilman Perdido, acted as the wise man on council. He would bring up historical facts, he would educate us on things, and it was actually very helpful. Earlier this year, we as a council voted to make and recognize racism of public health crisis. I think I've not done a good job enough to sometime explain what that means. There are five key determinants of health that is place-based, that is, when you look at it as a public health crisis, you're not looking at acts, but you're looking at outcomes. Those five outcomes are economic stability, education, social and community context, health and healthcare, neighborhood and built environments. And so I want to talk a little bit, just a little bit, as we have this conversation, and certainly I'll follow the president's wishes, I chair the Committee on Parks, I am more than willing to continue having conversations at all times. But I think that we need to be very clear to the viewing public and to those who follow council, that here we are committed to equity. And I have not talked to the mayor about this, but I'm sure if he was here, he would also make a commitment to equity. I am in favor of everybody. I want every community to do well, I want everyone to prosper and do well. And so I'm for everybody. Unfortunately, though, our history, we have hundreds of years of history that is not equal. And because of segregation and Jim Crow, and because of discrimination in housing and redlining and the lack of auto loans, the war on drugs, the pipeline to prison system, and various other things we can say, unfortunately, things are not equal in our city. And so I kind of kept two pots. This would be the African-American community, and this would be the majority of community. And if you see, one's about twice as filled as the other, that's Pittsburgh. We have some very, very wealthy communities that are filled to the top, but on average, block communities are probably, income is about half those of the majority of the community. And so it's a pretty good indication of what it looks like. And so if you say, we want equal, which is what I'm for, I'm for both pots being filled, that's what I want, that's what I fight for. But these are resources. So if you give the same amount of resources, and I don't do this well, I'm very spilly, but I'm going to make the, hopefully make the point, if you give the same amount of resources to both places, it'll continue to look the same, it won't change. No matter how many times you do this, if you give the same resources to different groups of people, given their history, they will never be equal. Equal will lead to inequity, it will lead to continual outcomes that are disproportionately bad for communities of color. But if you start doing this, which is, again, I'm not very good at, but I'll do that, which you certainly give some to the, to those communities, but you give more to those communities, if we do that over time, over time, this will become equal. Equity is actually the first step to equality. If you want these two things to equal, then these have to receive disproportionate resources because for about 300, 400 years, they've received less resources. We started to prove that, in fact, when I first came to council, how the city had been using CWG money to unfortunately not give twice as much to these communities, but to do something else, which was using them only in poor communities and using bond money only in wealthy communities. And so equal became disproportionately unequal. And so unfortunately, in Pittsburgh, you know, we're a progressive city, but progression, progressiveness doesn't necessarily mean that you're promoting African-American communities or low and moderate income communities. So I'm for equity. And so at every moment, whatever I'm involved in, I'll be looking for equity, I'll be looking for us and the city to lead the way to putting disproportionate resources into low and moderate income communities so that at the end of our time, these communities become more equal. And so I will continue to do that, I think anything else is unfair, unequitable, and unjust. And I wanted to sort of give this graphic explanation so that as we move forward and as I continue to have this conversation, you'll see what I do and why I do it.
Thank you. Any other members? I will very briefly say, I fully agree, I think that's a wonderful description and way to show what equity is. It was either my first or second year on council, you were leading a conversation around supplanting of resources. And it was at that time that I also argued, and I used the example of $10, that maybe it was nine at the time, if we were to put $1 in every council member's district, that was equal, but that wasn't what was actually necessary. We needed to put three into the hill, three into the home wood, maybe 50% into squirrel hill. And I use that example, arguing we had to catch up. So I think that's a great illustration of what we've been trying to achieve over the years, so thank you. Councilwoman?
I just want to say, just real briefly, I think that, you know, my district has so many diverse neighborhoods, and so I understand and appreciate the need for making sure that we're adding more to neighborhoods that haven't seen investment in decades. And so I'm happy to see some of that starting to occur. But I also have said many times, you also have to make sure we're keeping the tax base here and the taxpayers here, and make sure that we're also giving to neighborhoods, and I say you did, so I want to say, so I want to make sure people understand, you're not saying not to give to neighborhoods that have, that are paying taxes, that have, also have some needs, so that they don't slide and become the neighborhoods next that are in need, that we're maintaining what we have, but still lifting up other neighborhoods. And I think people need to understand that, because when they hear this conversation, all they hear is, it's going to this one neighborhood or this one area, and people are paying taxes and not seeing any results for their dollars. So I think what they need to hear and know is that you're not saying not to give to all neighborhoods, you're saying these neighborhoods need to be lifted up and equal. So that's my, good presentation. I always wonder what you're doing with all those water things. I'm thinking, where is this going? I'm thinking of something about the lead in the water.
Yeah. Motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.